I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here who would like to make any public comments at this time? Mr. Roger Longer. How are you?
Good.
How are you? Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Roger Longer. Currently running for a Franklin County Sheriff. I'm a retired detective sergeant with the Vermont State Police. I was in the fusion center my last two years with the state police. What we did there was an intel division where we would collect information if there was a nexus of a crime that involved a Vermonter. And we would organize that information and we would send it back out into the field as actionable intelligence where we could advance criminal investigations and also lead to successful prosecutions. Prior to that, I was a patrol commander in St. Elvis for just about six years. And prior to that, I was a trooper, sergeant, Wilston, Ramoyle, and later here in St. Elvis. I have a master's degree from Justice Leadership. I'm currently working with the St. Elvis Police Department. I have been for the last four years. I work in the schools. I work in the educational training division with that. I really enjoy it. It's a lot of fun. I think if you're going to influence positive behaviors, it's going to be there in the elementary schools. I'm in a K through eight school with 720 students. I deal with them every day, and I think it certainly made a positive impact. I also like what the St. Elvis PD is doing. They're doing Crime Street Crimes Unit. I would like the sheriff had two deputies on that Street Crimes Unit and expand it through the county. It'd be awesome to see two troopers on there, two deputies, two St. Elvis PD, and maybe a swamp PD officer or two if they can do it. I think countywide is where we're going to make our biggest impact. So I'm looking at the bigger picture. I think it's working well in St. Elvis. It's clearly working well, and I think we can make it work even better and where we all benefit as a community. So that's my ditch. If you have any questions?
So you're just getting out, Roger, all the select boards and throughout the county?
I have. This is my 12 out of 15 select boards. August Town, Fletcher, and Bertham. So I'm going to play on his mills prior to the primary.
So are you in a primary race?
I am not in a primary race.
You're running as a...
Democrat. Although I don't think the position should be legal. It is. You know, the sheriff's department is evidence-based. You know, you make your laws in force.
What are you hearing as you're out and about? Is there a theme?
There is. Everyone's a big thing. Finding needles in bad places such as Little League baseball dugouts, semitaries, pretty much anywhere else, the beaten paths, the rail trails. That's probably one of the biggest things. Another one is ATVs. We don't have one here in the city, probably in the town as much, but in the outlier areas, it's the wild west. And they're looking for help. I'm interviewing some people that I know, older people that are involved in ATV writing. There's some successful programs out of the Hampshire. I want to do a little more research and maybe start presenting it to some of these select boards of how you open up lands and how you do the community policing aspect of it, allowing them to police themselves first and have group meetings where, you know, finding what's going well and what's not going well. And base enforcement off of that, certainly given our opportunity to police themselves. It seems to be working in other parts of the lingual field if I've had a high ATV volume of traffic. Another one is the speeding cars. I mean, we get those complaints every day. Whenever a traffic pattern changes, whether it be construction, whether it be the dips on Elm Street, particularly there at, people seek alternate routes and increases traffic in other areas. So yeah, so we're hearing things like that, pretty much countywide. Certainly, you can see black marks in the roadway of, you know, people bowling donuts, doing what they call those J-hooks in the roads. I've been in Hyde Agent, then up the Fairfield, the Swamp Road, you know, all that kind of stuff happened. So that's where the push for, I think, policing countywide really is pretty strong. The state police are looking to get out of these towns, starting next year with Dale S-273. They aren't going to take any town contracts. They're going to strictly just be responsive in town's currency, but they would like to be highway patrol in major crimes. And it's really, the county system is set up, or the sheriff's department can grow in that area, except it's already set up, and I'd like to grow that. But to see like towns like Fairfield, Fletcher, who don't have policing, Bakerfield, I sat with them, they would love to have some policing. And there are some creative ways in which we can do that, effectively do that. There's some federal funding out there where, you know, nothing says you have to do all your enforcement on the highways. You can get on the major routes such as 105, 108, 104, and help out some of these small towns that really have no policing. Other than when they call the state police, they get a response that probably comes from the barracks. So it could be more immediate if you happen to be in that town. So that's what I'm looking to do, is to grow the department, take it to the next level. I think Sheriff Morris has done a good job, but I think we could take it further and really make it more equitable for all the towns of Franklin County and work with our partners. The relationship building is huge. You know, again, with the Street Crimes Unit, I can see us working together and doing, being effective countywide.
So did you say, Roger, that, so the state police won't take any more new towns on, but they will stay with their existing towns, or will they...
Yeah. When I was there, there were 19 troopers I supervised and stuff. They're down to 12 now. And they've got, they have a couple vacancies, but they've got rid of a few positions. You know, I think to meet their vision one day where they want to be on the interstate, you know, they're slowly marching towards that. I have a good relationship, obviously, with the state police barracks. You know, I would welcome an opportunity to sit down with the station commander, then roll them off and put a plan together, you know, along with Chief Taylor and Chief Spell, and just see what we can do as a county together and accomplish our goals.
Any other questions?
How well does the sheriff's department work currently with the city PD? And besides a crimes unit, do you see other opportunities where they may be able to work together?
I see us as pooling resources, you know, the stuff that we have. You know, there are events I'm sure that are really tight for city PD to fulfill, and I'd like to be able to pick up, have, you know, Chief Taylor pick up the phone and say, "Hey, we need two deputies," or "We need five," you know, or if there's an event going on. Does it happen now? Can they do that? I guess I don't want to say anything negative, but I know we can enhance that, I know we can do it. I'd like to see us when we do firearms, do it together, do some training together. They can, you know, the city can have an expert, we can have a firearms expert instructor, that type of thing, where it's not all burdened out in one police department. I think the pooling of resources is where in the future we're going to have to do it because no one department can afford everything. But if we share our resources, we can probably have everything collectively and not individually.
So while working closer together with other law enforcement agencies, you see a way to reduce costs for all the agencies in the county?
Oh, absolutely.
Yep. Similar to what our schools are, have started to do?
Yep.
That's a great example.
Thank you, sir.
That's assuming the union district isn't working a little... Well, it is on paper, I guess, I'm sure. But I know with the police department, the sharing of resources is huge.
I know when you get apparatuses and, you know, all those little tools and stuff they have, they're costly, so, you know, if we have one drone that we could call, you know, the sheriff's department, you know, Sheriff Allen has a drone, and, you know, if Vermont State Police need it for a reason, they can just give them a call and he'll pop it up in the air and it's, you know, $15,000 worth of money, so.
And I think you're going to see technology advance quickly. I mean, law enforcement will be using them on a more regular basis.
Well, thank you, Roger. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Moving on to public hearing on the grant application for BCDP. Chip, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is a required public hearing, and there's a resolution for the council to sign afterward. You know, we normally go through these motions for grants for the, through the Vermont Community Development Program to access U.S. housing and urban development funds. And this grant would be for a project that we're all pretty familiar with now. The, it's associated with the Congress and Maine Project, and specifically, it would contribute toward the construction of the new housing on Maiden Lane. But what we're proposing is that the city and Champlain Housing Trust apply to the BCDP program for $1 million for, to be used in many ways for the costs that are associated with that development, including demolition of buildings, brownfield mitigation, construction of parking, infrastructure and other site improvements, acquisition of property, construction of housing units. With 30 of those housing units being subsidized for affordability and 24 to 25 of them being market rate perhaps, perhaps up to 30, but more likely to be 24 to 25 market rate. We would, of course, we're still in the process of getting permits for this project, so there's still many things that the public has yet to see. We'll certainly get all local and state permits before the project is underway. All the environmental and historic preservation reviews will be performed as required. I think the community is somewhat more familiar now with the buildings that are proposed for demolition, but they are the two directly across from City Hall here, and then the green one, Green House on Commerce Street, and then the apartments at 8 to 10 Maiden Lane. And although this was already the city's plan, with this federal funding, we would be required to follow the Uniform Relocation Act for any residents who are impacted by this project, like those at 8 to 10 Maiden Lane. So there are some very specific rules that we'll have to follow to make sure those folks are taken care of, new housing found and whatever happens next. I do have some handouts here if anyone would like to see. No? Otherwise, I'd just be interested to see if the council or the public have any questions at this time.
Want to get like that application, Chip?
The application is due... The application's due around September 4th. We decide to get it in before then, if we can. And then the BCDP board would be considering this in early November. We would actually know pretty quickly if we're funded after that board meeting.
Michael?
Is this a pretty highly competitive grant? And how do you think that will fare? Like, what do you anticipate? Do you feel like this is a strong project?
It can be, it can be a competitive grant program. A lot depends on what is coming in. The board meets three times a year, and they will basically look at what comes before them for every meeting, but they don't try and take away their entire year's worth of funding and of board meeting. We were encouraged by the reactions of BCDP staff when we discussed this project with them. They told us to not fret about asking for the full $1 million that we could ask for. They said they did not know of any other large application of this, of this size that would be coming for the, for the round in the November 4 meeting. So while it is competitive, we don't think we're going up against anything else, you know, any other big projects. There are none that we're aware of that would make us feel that our chances are not good.
So if we ask for a million, they don't want to give us a million, could they still give us 3/4 of a million? Or will they give us what we asked for or nothing?
I believe they can be partial awards.
Of course.
That might be part of the reason why there's a board meeting, although, you know, they are also very... These meetings, these public hearings are very important to them, so they also, that also might be a source of reluctance for them to do less than one million. We were basically saying, we're going to apply for the limit up to $1 million, and we'll go from there and we'll see what, we'll see what's possible.
The $1 million grant that embedded within the pro forma that the council's previously seen a big way.
So how does the timing of the award fit into the construction time?
You mean if we're hoping to begin in the fall?
Yeah. And the money, because I know even though you may get the award, there's still some contracts that...
Yeah, so... They have to do with where the money, which is part of the project, the award would be coming towards, you know, and this award, the award is primarily geared towards the housing components, which is backloaded. There's some overlap between the central parking lot, which serves both the housing and the commercial building, but it's the commercial building that we see starting on in the fall and will just the demolition with, you know, the RV approval, of course, and, you know, we own the properties, so that's, we're just kind of increasing our degree of readiness, if you will, but full construction we can get in later.
Any others that we're not here for a discussion of the goal? But I see a resolution on the end of the package. So if you want something from us, sir?
Yeah, that's...
It's possible, yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion to authorize the city to turn to a grant application for Vermont Community Development Board. Second, second, should I add a second?
Could I just, sorry to interrupt, but it is important that we show that we, have the public been asked for their input yet?
No, I just couldn't...
It is important that we show we went forward with the public hearing as a program.
So it's, Mr. Berthin, you usually have some comments?
This is your first one, or is it? Give them a break.
Well, first, again, I want to commend, you know, the city for all the investments that they've made, and I think this is another project that will enhance the entire community. And I think there is something for both from the retail as well as the business, again, additional, you know, residences that I think are really going to be needed here in this area, so I'm sure I support the project.
Is that what you had written down for him to read now?
He's a good student. Any other comments? So we have a motion on the floor, a second. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip. Dominic, we'll move on to item number five, which is the rental rates.
We're proposing some adjustments to the facility rental rates at City Hall. There were some photocopying problems, so you showed there are two documents. One is a rate proposal for the City Hall arraignment, and the second is some comparable local rental rates. You didn't have any of that, but you've got a copy of it, yeah. Kristen was out on Friday afternoon, and as I pulled town lights this morning, I said, "I know Kristen's left," and you're no Kristen's left. At any rate, I think it's been our staff experience that we're out of the market right now with our rates. They're very, very low. They haven't been adjusted since within the City Hall renovations. And there's some, the delta between what we, the rent department brings in when renting it and offering a birthday party versus when somebody takes it at the existing rates for a full day, we're losing a lot of money in that current model. So these proposed rates, I think, line up well with some of the comparable local rates that we benchmark against, particularly this room in St. Elvis, but also the Community Hall at North Hero, similarly sized community spaces. So this proposal is to go from, current rates are 35 an hour and 150 for the day regardless of what day of the week. This proposal would go to $90 an hour on weekdays and 130 an hour on weekends, and the daily rate, as you can see, is 300.
Don, where are you getting 90 and 130?
More copies of this stuff?
Okay.
I'll edit your background.
The one I have is 60 and 100. No, the kind that's 35.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Kristen was out. This was the draft. In addition to Tom's copying challenges, I changed the content to back the rates off a little bit and then forgot to tell Kristen when she ran copies.
So we're not through it again?
So Mike and I have the white ones. What should we go for? Maybe that's the better question.
So the, so just to clarify, so the proposed hourly rates are 60 and 100. 60 per hour on weekdays, 100 per hour on weekends. Is that what you're proposing? The dailies are 300, 500, and 750?
Yeah, we're going to run a copy of that. We're going to make an error. Want to move on to the next item? More of the copies?
That's the new thing.
Let's look for the gold on that side, huh? Got it, Doc?
Yep.
Want us to move to liquid control?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I move we recess out of normal city council meeting and go into liquid control.
Okay. Any favors, say aye.
Aye. I'm going to refuse my son.
And I wrap the head out from the co-op here a minute.
Hi there.
Curry, how are you?
Yeah, everybody.
Good. You want Leon?
Oh, yeah, sure. We have a second license application from St. Elvis co-op. You guys can sit up here if you'd like.
What's up?
So co-op is moving, has it no liquid now?
That's correct. And we did previously have a license. I think the last time it was in 2014, and so we have not exercised that in the past. But with the change over in terms of board and operations, the board has asked us to revisit and see the new opportunity again to provide both beer and wine in our retail store. So as you know, we moved at the new retail store in April of 2012, and so, again, always looking for new opportunities to better serve, you know, our, our members and our community. Certainly want to thank the city of St. Elvis for the whole support. That probably, it's hard to believe that, you know, it's been as long as it has been already with the start of the stores and over the planned expansion. So, you know, we're here looking for, again, that particular license and see if there's an opportunity for us there at the store.
Now, what was the, what was the reason originally the license had packed up there?
Well, initially, when we started, actually, there was some questions as to whether we should offer that in competition with milk, in milk beverages. And so there was a little bit of conversation around that, so we kind of put that on hold as we were kind of really looking at the business itself and maturing the business. And so I think we're in a better position today than we were when we first started with the new retail store and confident with, you know, the tenure of our staff that we can manage that in this new facility. So I think that's why I think the timing is better than it was earlier.
I always would consider the co-op as like a niche business, and to know that I can go down the co-op for a Bud Light and it kind of rubs me the other way. You know, are you selling domestic beers there? Are you selling, what is it you're going to be selling?
Well, we're talking to distributors now. We're talking to Farrell to see exactly what our right formula or recipe is, if you will. I personally envision that there'll be some craft beers, some, obviously, we can support our neighbors, but we need to look at the whole spectrum before we make a decision.
So the possibility exists that you'll be another outlet, just like the break car across the street?
Perhaps, perhaps, maybe a smaller scale.
Again, I think we are going to test that and start off with a very small case, if you will, and see where the reaction is from the membership and the community that supports the cooperative store and see if it's a matter of convenience or not. And then we'll, you know, have to evaluate whether this will make me feel there's opportunity to grow that or not, but it's not initially to change over our entire cooler space by means, but it's really kind of to use one segment of our cooler to see if it really is the demand there based on some of the conversations we have with those that patronize the store, but it's not to turn it over to, again, more of a convenience store. That's not necessarily a smart convenience for those that might be there and their members that, you know, obviously enjoy our sales bar for our members living in that store. And so, again, we'll see if it is really to support and maintain.
This license also gives you the ability to sell wine, too?
Yes.
So you're going to be doing that?
Probably on a even smaller scale than the beer. Again, we've only talked to Farrell once. We wanted to do this process first and then decide if that's something that we wanted to bring to the store and into what it's set up.
And no, you don't foresee any added construction to...
No, or to use existing, the actual cooler itself that we have now.
No, again, we're in the Ben and Jerry's, right?
No, they have the cheese. They have their own cooler. We have a little more made ice cream in the front, so no, so Jerry's still first incentive for us.
Well, we are familiar with, with what we've seen in the past and requirements that are required as far as training, and so that's a big deal, yeah.
Absolutely. So that will include anyone that's on the floor as well as all of our store managers and, you know, that we have four managers as well as all of our staff, as well as some of us, including myself, that will go through.
Because all the Chinese traitor on the street here, New Me.
Yes, we understand that, and so, you know, that's one of the things we want to enter is very slowly and cautiously as well, so.
Are you going to do automated readers for people's licenses, or are you going to like look at them and compare dates?
Yeah, so I think initially it's going to probably be more on the manual side and then see where that takes us and whether we can justify going to that next step and bringing the technology for that.
Timing with the, if approved?
If approved, I imagine, and obviously it goes through all the training, and so I suspect it'll probably be beginning September.
Make the motion to approve the license as presented. Second. Or that again.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? So we'll get back to some.
Thank you.
I would just leave you. We'll be watching you.
And we'll get Cardigan in as well.
Ready, come on back? Thank you, Leon.
We still have some more liquid calls, all right?
Just a...
Minutes?
Motion through minutes to 11.
Second, my chat. Any corrections, members? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Motion passes. Curry, thank you very much.
Over to your presentation at the end.
Thank you. Moving on to, we want to go back to Dominic and restructure discussion. So we have a current...
We've got a current or a sheet. So by way of summary, currently we rent for $35, and what was 35 is becoming $60 on weekdays and 100 on weekends. And we currently rent also by the day at $150, and that 150 is converting to 300 for the day for weekdays, 500 for weekends, or the weekend package for 750. And if you look at the comparable rates, I think we're still below in the market.
But you have chosen not to do a, I know the museum does a non-profit rate and a couple of them, like you've chosen not to go down that route?
It's almost all nonprofits.
That are renting?
Yeah, yeah. And the rates are pretty low, and I, you know, part of the sentiment with that has always been that, you know, it's a community-supported facility. It's not exclusively residents, but it's a large portion of them that are residents. Many of them already paid for the renovation with the bond vote. And, you know, by and large, it's nonprofit and community groups and, you know, the alternative And, you know, the alternative would, would be to have a higher rate, I think, for folks that don't fit that category rather than having a, a rate that's still lower for nonprofits. And we felt like in our experience, it was just simpler to keep it, keep it kind of neat and clean. And this is, this is the cost of the facility. And not have to go through that analysis.
What was the birthday party rate?
Well, an individual birthday party is like two fifty, three hundred. But you stack them, and so you can do three a day.
So, uh, for a two-hour period or?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think we're still, we're, we still do better with three birthday parties than this rate structure. But, you know, our mission here is broader than just making money.
What's the demand right now?
It's wicked high. That's your meeting for the liquid?
Yeah.
When you need it.
Kristen keeps the schedule running.
Yeah, the weekends usually book out four to six weeks, especially in the summer. Um, weeknights are pretty popular. Days, I would say, are pretty open, but the rec department fills the days a lot during the summertime, taking hours.
I, I guess I'd be interested to know what it's like in six months. Because I'm, I'm, I've always liked to rent it out twice as much for half the price as opposed to half as much for twice the price. So if the demand really drops, I'd be kind of interested about revisiting some of these rates in the future. I know when I sat on the rec commission, we kind of thought we were going to compare the basketball court to the ice rink at Collins Curly. And I thought that was coolish and tried it. And no one wanted to play basketball here for seventy dollars an hour, whatever it was, crazy, crazy amounts. So we ended up backing it back and I can't remember what it was. So anyway, I'd be interested in that in a few, in a few months.
Yeah, my most recent experience was, Kristen, what do we charge for a birthday party?
Non-ride.
Pardon?
Through the rec department?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think it's two hundred and twenty dollars. I have booked those, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
I could check with.
So that's the highest right there. And I just went through trying to find a date for my son's birthday party. And we had a hard time trying to find a two-hour block that was available, you know, so. I totally get the sentiment. But thus far, our experience has, has been that the product is unique enough. You know, I think most of the competition, maybe not the best word, but, uh, is, is the Bliss Auditorium. And I, and I think we're, you know, on par with Bliss.
I think people have to realize too, there's a lot of costs associated. It's a public building, but we still, we pay for trash. We have to pay for the heat. We have to pay for the AC. We have to pay for someone to come clean up after.
That's the biggest.
I mean, there's a lot of things that's built into it too. So, I mean, if it's thirty, if thirty-five dollars an hour, there isn't covering, covering the cost. That's a no-brainer to raise it anyway. So, sorry, Kate.
No, it's okay. I think, I'm thinking along the same lines, but I just worry a little bit about pricing us too high for many people. I hear from a lot of people that the Bliss is just is not affordable for what they're trying to do. So I always thought it was really nice that there was this alternative and this beautiful space that people have used that they've already paid for at a really affordable rate. I want it to be priced right because it's a gorgeous space, but I, you know, just sort of coming up right to where the Bliss is seems like it doesn't strike very balance. I'm happy with this, but ninety dollars an hour though, so I'll stick that. I don't know, I, I, it's similar to Chad. Seeing people come in a lot, you know, if we can get this to be a place where people have their weddings, people have parties, um, we support the local community because then they have a caterer come in and they use a florist and they have a DJ come in. You know, if they can't do that because the hall costs so much, you know, I don't know. I just like this to be a space that's used widely.
Dom, what's a plan for the installation of a PA system and their, their plan?
Are you, do you have a question?
Yeah.
So we, the cities received fifteen thousand dollars for its, there are many improvements in added amenities we need in the auditorium, sound system, lighting, curtains. We've received fifteen thousand from the National Life Foundation and the Vermont Community Foundation and we've applied to the Cultural Facilities Program through the state for more. Once we hear on that grant, then we'll decide what items we're going to start pursuing in the auditorium. And we'll seek the council's, um, council when necessary. The PA system's probably near the top of the list.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Dom, are you looking for, are you looking for a vote on this?
Yeah, that's out. If you're ready for the questions, if you want to amend it, you can.
I personally, uh, I tend to agree with Chad to let it run for six months and go review. See if it's impacted by Kate's concern.
I'd also like to see us consider a nonprofit rate because I think, you know, if somebody's gonna come here and have a big event, you might be able to, to charge a certain cost. If you've got some nonprofit, like Head Start who has no budget but wants to have a end-of-year school party for their fifty kids, I hate to see them unable to use the space, which I think is kind of rarely we go with this.
I'm glad we amended that we keep the old rates in place for anybody that's a nonprofit, but the new rates in place for a couple of us.
And we do this in December.
Can we do a tracking as to how many of each line up for the six months?
Yeah.
Make a motion on that side.
Motion by Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any other discussions? Kate, you agree with that? All in the favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dom. Moving on to Tom, revised financial policy.
This is a memo in fact, as John and I on the outline of the policy, to take a look at as well, finally on the chairs. You might recall during the last audit that the auditors pointed out that we weren't strictly following our fund balance policy, particularly with the distinction between what's committed and what's restricted. And also, um, we had adopted a policy that said we're gonna build up a reserve, substantial uncommitted reserve fund. And we, we weren't really trying to do that in our budgeting. And so, um, this policy, uh, was an effort to align our policy with our practices. Tom, anything you would add?
Yeah, um, the issue really boils down to the cities. What most of us think of as reserves will be having, you know, water and wastewater, like it's only a hundred thousand dollars for building up that fund balance. The reality is, is at your end, if you wanted that, is that there's no reserve per se, that nothing to add to it. But from a staff perspective, the way businesses always run is we can use those reserves on a temporary basis. We frequently do. Because it's not taking it perfectly. A great example is, I manage the cash for the city and the wastewater project is underway and we're spending about a million dollars a month on that project. And so, rather than borrow, we use our reserves. When the project is over, that, that money will go right back into the account. But why spend money and interest when you don't have to? So there's temporary uses. And then there's permanent uses, which goes through the warrant processor, goes through the manager and the council. They wanted a little more clarity on that and they really wanted some clarity as to, you know, the managers were always cheap versus you know it. So we think we're giving them what they wanted without hamstringing staff or without taking authority away from the council. We're trying to describe directly how it's, how it's worked for a long time. Does that make sense?
Do we have to run this by them or are we just going to do it the way we're doing it? And we wait for the next audit and see what we're gonna do or we gotta run this by them to make sure they're?
It's our policy. They're really, you know, the non-tangible and the restricted fund balance and the committed is not really anything they have a concern with. It's really just this, this assigned and, and who's a good one to give it. I think they're willing to buy that because it's the council's policy and it's, it's, um, staff who deals with that most directly and, you know, we think they're comfortable with it. I don't think we need them to be approved, yeah. And finally, we've pointed out that the the role of the staff is to build what the council tells us to do. And if sometimes that's in conflict with the auditors, that's okay. We're not trying to create odd findings or create issues with the auditor. We're trying to stay on the wayside of the line. But auditors are conservative by nature and their recommendations are always the most conservative possible. It doesn't necessarily align with a city that has three major funds that are all very strong and a city that has a TIF specialist.
Just to clarify, the three major funds would be?
Water, wastewater, and general fund. And the standard recommendation is you should have roughly two funds in your quote-unquote fund balance. And from our perspective, one, fund balance isn't cash. A great example is that the properties across the street, they're in our fund balance as an asset. Not money I can spend. It's easily, it's money we could borrow against. But from a cash perspective, all three of those funds have separate accounting, but there's one bank account. And so, we can manage the cash. The expenses are, are known well in advance and we can plan ahead and the revenues are known well in advance. And so, um, that two-month recommendation from a practical perspective would mean I'm sitting on millions and millions in cash that I don't need to be sitting on, that I would come back to the manager and say, put this better use. So really, from our perspective, if we had well under that two months, I'd still be quite comfortable managing the cash. And as it stands right now, water and wastewater are very strong. And the general fund with the benefit of the redevelopment fund is very strong. But as Dom has pointed out, the purpose of redevelopment fund is not to just check the audit box. It's to leverage growth and ran less.
Motion to approve the revised financial policy?
Second. Any discussion? Public comment? On it. Hearing none. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dom.
Motion to approve minutes, six, eleven, eighteen.
Second. Second by Chad. Any corrections or amendments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All in.
Warrants twenty-two, six, twenty-three, eighteen.
Second. All in the favor, approving warrants, six, twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Six, twenty-nine, eighteen.
Second. Approval of twenty-nine, Warren. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, six, eighteen.
Second. All in the approval, in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Moving on, um, mayor's report. I'll take, I'll take a moment to plug the photo competition that we did, or are doing. Keep in mind, I got more than three photos in. But with the help of the messenger, Barrett Ben and Jerry's, the border brothers, we have received about a hundred and twenty-five photos that will be on display and we're honoring the co-op. So, uh, this is for the co-op's hundredth anniversary. So we have, uh, like I said, a hundred and twenty-five that are gonna be on display in the auditorium for a session. We can put them up there when we're done. So we will, uh, I'd like to get the word out for the general public to show and the, so people will be voting on their favorites. We'll take the top twelve or fifteen, blow them up to this size in Mountain and Taylor Park. So, these could be going up and showcase what our region does and what we're known for. So that's the main premise, is to have a sort of a tourist attraction for us in the downtown area and a community event and, uh, two, two community events. One will be the reception here. And then the other one will be, uh, when we do blow them up, we hope to take the photos and auction them off to raise money for the Arts Council and the downtown, uh, organization. So that's the big picture. The, the reception of submitting photos has been significant, so it's been great to see. And, um, so if you can pass the word, and like to see all the council there. It's only a pop-in, pop-out. It's not a dedicated time of, you don't have to be here sixteen o'clock. Just come in and vote and move on. And then we're gonna take these same photos and we're gonna relocate them to the museum on a week from Thursday for the Chamber Mixer for another voting opportunity. So that's the, that's the big picture. No bucket headed, I guess. So, uh, I had that. Couple of things that I had also was, um, I did get an email regarding the fountain and concern about, um, kids swimming in the fountain, kids climbing on the fountain. The fountain's starting, starting to take a little bit of abuse, um, scratches, um, other things. And the suggestion was that we probably need to have some bigger notification around the fountain as to what the expectations are. So I'm not sure if that's something Marty could look at. I'm not sure. We've got some side joke. We can certainly look at putting on the side joke. I did speak to your wife and ask her to keep the kids out of it. Hopefully that will work. It was my turn. But it's a hundred degrees and the kid's standing in the water, it's not, with his feet in the water, it's not a big deal. It's when they start climbing on it.
It's just, uh, another vote for a splash pad or something in the park, right?
I'm gonna deal with that on, I think it's Wednesday.
Very inviting.
Pool committee meeting, so, you know. It's not as big of a problem in October.
Proving the pool's hard.
I'm having, I'm having a splash pad somewhere.
Your house.
Sounds good. And the other thing I would share is Marty and I have, I'm not sure where this fits into our new, um, our rate, our rate for?
I think that was pre-existing.
Oh, okay. But, uh, we coordinated an effort with the, uh, the Red Cross to do a blood drawing here at City Hall on August seventh. Uh, the main purpose of it is to promote our downtown businesses. So, uh, what Marty and I talked about was when you get a solicitation from the American Red Cross to donate blood, they offer you a gift card to Dunkin' Donuts or Amazon. So our thinking was, why don't we, why don't we take that opportunity and hit up, not hit up, but, you know, ask who would be interested, of the local businesses that would donate a free dessert with dinner, a gift card, whatever the case is. So when people come to give, give blood, instead of an Amazon card, they'll get a card to the downtown in hopes that that would drive more people to give blood because they're supporting downtown and it would get out. And obviously everyone knows that once you get, you know, a card, you're probably gonna spend more than that five or ten dollar gift card. So this, this was, and we, we wanna do it twice a year, so I'm not sure if, if the council is, uh, is open to a blood donation to have in the past, but? Uh, what's the inverse, ten to three? So that would be the other thing we're been focused on. Any other comments from the council?
I'd like to plug the, uh, King Street Classic, uh, coming up on July twenty-one. Thanks again to Kathy Manahan for all the work she's doing to get this thing up and running instead of shorting them. July twenty-one.
Still looking for volunteers. I think last she needed six or seven. I'm just somewhere in that here.
They've taken over Center Street this year too.
Ted, what does that benefit?
That benefits, uh, there's a new charity this year.
Yeah, it's a different charity. I'm, I'm not sure what the charity is this year. Uh, last year, I think it was the Fire Department.
No, this year is, uh, I'm trying to think of what it is.
Does it have a B C something in it?
It's good, but always is. She always picks it good.
Any other comments, Ted? Michael? Any other comments, Mike?
We're still working on the truck traffic on Upper Walden. Seems to me has gotten a little bit better, but I've seen a few recently, so. The other question that I've heard from folks on Main Street is about paving and sidewalk stuff. I have faith on how that's going.
They're confident they'll be able to get the north side sidewalk done this year. Next year, I would expect they would do the curves in the south side and then probably in the paving sequence after that.
Excellent.
It's going quick.
They're making good progress. They, they're lucky they've had decent weather, but they're doing a good job, Joe.
Marty, one thing we talked about briefly, I talked to Dom and Chip, is that if we can encourage rights to get out with maybe a door hanger or someone to give about a two-day notice on when that curb work might be done or sidewalk. I hate to mention it in public, but on Main Street where we already got sidewalks and curbs, they came in and tore out a lot of perennials that were along the curb and no one had a chance to they, they probably had a chance, but they didn't, maybe they didn't realize how quickly it was going to happen to remove those so they could, could put them back in. So it'd be nice to give.
So they typically give a notice about a week and a half before they start. And if we see a situation like that, we'll specifically approach that properly or, but obviously we missed a couple on the other thing. Messenger, I know we did. They were able to relocate it. So, but I'll remind you of that.
Chad? I just had a couple of quick things. Swan residents, I noticed that was in the paper, it might have been today or tomorrow, the board talking about speeding in neighborhoods. We're having the same issue here. There's probably the main complaint now these days is speeding. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but maybe join the forces and hit it all up in one or two days. Maybe we could do something there. And then the other thing, we were at the fountain last night and a lot of the lion's mouths around the bowls where the water comes out of, only half of the water's coming out of. So I'm going to assume that leaves or something or flowers or.
P W is aware of that. They just need some time. They had to shut it down to clean it out.
Yeah, it looked good, it just, it's coming out.
Highways, kids were climbing it.
I'm trying to fix it. Yeah.
Future public works.
That was it.
Marie?
Is Alan still in charge of public work? So he has to get out of there.
Yes. Alan retires the other month, two million in August, and the next month. Resume review for his position is underway. So circle back with process and.
And we two are still having major problems with speeding and excessively noisy vehicles.
In the ward or on the street?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. Yeah, it's, it's awful. I don't know. The, the speed dips, they're not doing it.
They're not doing anything or?
What they're, what I find they're doing is they're slowing down the people that weren't a problem before, that just don't want to wreck their cars. And the ones that were speeders, speed over them because faster you go, less you feel.
I'm putting all the car parts down on the speed dips side. So there are a couple hanging there.
Nice. And the neighbors, the neighbors are not happy with them either, with this, with the dips.
And you want to take a nap?
I think something different has to be done there. It's just, it's very noisy for one thing. It's like bang, 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 all day, all night. You get a truck with a trailer with some equipment in the back and that's, and that street, our street is so heavily traveled. It's just, it's constant noise. I mean, I think doing something is better than doing nothing, but I'm not sure that they're really doing that.
The other option for that intersection is three-way stop.
Which intersection?
Where the speed clubs are. Where the south, the north town.
Oh, that's a little bit more red in there. The south, north town.
North town, yeah. You can do a three-way stop right there.
So.
That was one suggestion. I had heard someone had posted that. If they wrecked their car, they'd just rather come to a complete stop. That would be another option too. Because they're on both sides of the south.
But they aren't, the, the, they're, they're very noisy, very noisy. I mean, I, I kind of almost don't hear anymore because I've gotten used to it. But like in, in the, in the case where you may have someone who works third shift, is trying to sleep during the day and sleeps in the front of the house, that, that can be pretty, I mean, unless you have a fan or something going, but even then you hear it. But it's the big trucks with trailers on the back that go for that, construction trucks.
People boat.
What's that?
Boat flies very weird.
Yeah. Airplanes would be terrific.
Any other comments, anyone?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Thank you all.